Please rise for the flag, which is in the fly.
I pledge the citizens of the United States of America to the true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll send a meeting to the councilman for Republicans this time. Anybody who wishes to address the board may do so. Melissa, go.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Rivers told me that you had all missed my report so much in order withdrawal and that I needed to come tonight because of the work we did for just too short.
Thank you, George.
I'm here tonight. I have the pleasure of introducing Alicia Sirk from the Small Business Development Center. Alicia is the business advisor that I wrote to all about in our reports. She'll be here and she's going to tell you some more about what she does, but she's here on behalf of the Small Business Development Center and she'll be meeting with individuals in Rouse Point or the surrounding area who would like some assistance in developing or making changes in a business. So I think it's a week's hang in a while. Just turn it over to Alicia.
Hi. So my name's Alicia Sirk. I started with the Small Business Development Center back in New York and this is one of the outreach locations and this is mine. So you'll see me around a lot, I hope. One of the SPD DC in Plattsburgh is funded by both SUNY Plattsburgh through the Research Foundation, but also through the Small Business Administration through the federal government. Our counseling services that we provide to businesses are free and open to the public. And basically what we're trying to do is be here for businesses that are either currently in operation that need help with marketing, public relations, management, accounting, you name it. We're here to provide a service for them to help them to flourish and to grow. We also are hoping to encourage the growth of other businesses as well in this area. People who are interested in maybe starting a daycare, you know, various restaurants, I mean, you name it, we're here to help them succeed. We're also here to hopefully help people to be able to answer questions before they make big mistakes. Frequently we find that people come to us when it's almost too late or it is too late. And so we're hoping to be able to provide this service to them. You know, if they know I'm here, they'll be able to come see me before they get to that point. So hopefully that will help in that area as well. But, you know, we're here for whatever they need. I will be starting approximately bi-weekly and then as need arises, I'll be here, but mostly on Wednesdays. So as people take us up on it, I'll be here. Any particular questions?
How do you make people aware that you're available?
Well, some of the things we're going to be doing is some of the outreach through public relations we are. Melissa and I are going to go door-to-door as well and meet with current businesses and say, hey, I'm here, come see me. Some of the other programs that we have is we're trying to develop the, our veterans' program. Basically, I'm our veterans advocate and, you know, to let veterans know what's out there for them. There are certain grants, I'm sorry, not grants, loans that they are open to that other people aren't at different interest rates than other people. So hopefully this will even get some of them into the stocks as a veteran, but also to some of these programs.
Any other questions for the board? Am I going to see you on the 31st?
Um, probably.
Is it an open house at your place of business?
Yes, will you be there?
Yes, I will, ma'am.
It's fine, and I will see you.
And I've introduced Alicia to Mike, so they know each other. She'll be in this room for the most part, so that, and we are looking forward to going door-to-door. You know, interestingly enough, Small Business Development Center was one of our new partners through the Wyatt Transition Council. And what I found out from working with Dean Clark, who heads the agency, a lot of our businesses are clients of theirs who, you know, at one point or other have consulted or, as I remember, I think I first heard about the services through Lisa at the Hair Hut because Lisa had, I think she dailed with accounting, an accounting firm or something. And Dean and I had talked about a year and a half ago about making this door-to-door effort as soon as hopefully there was good news on Wyatt. And so it could not have worked out better. Here we are. We're going to be getting the payment sometime in the next few weeks and that handout that you have, I'm looking for feedback on that. That's on the Main Street program. I was thinking about distributing that as we go door-to-door. Yes. And I just, I do that together myself. It's not too professionally done, but it's something tangible that I have. I thought we'd need some at the village office and maybe put them, you know, in the mail possibly depending on what kind of a, well, I just stuff them in people's mailboxes, I suppose, as we go through. But we do have an extension on that grant through September of this year. We're going to be spending down our own street skate money and I actually see every penny of that $199,000 spent. No sense in wasting the state money while it's here. Property owners can take advantage. So if anybody does see this and, you know, wants to take advantage, there's up to $35,000 in state money available for a building project. Village is applying three windows and doors. It's a reimbursement, but the property owner buys them and then they reverse it. So just please feel free to give me a call.
We also, I'm sorry, we also do provide training programs for various businesses and we have some coming up. I gave you a handout about a couple there in the near future, but also March 12th, I'll be doing a new venture startup workshop here for people who aren't interested from the ground up. What do I need to do? It's the basics. And so I'll be doing that here for people in the areas that are getting fun and interested in that as well. Also, on back of my business card, there's a website. It's called business essentials.org. And this is a new website that we have developed that will be used as a pilot for other organizations across the country. We will have 20 training tutorials on there as well as all the contact information for the state of New York for what you need to do for business.
Would it be helpful for us to put something on our website about this?
It would actually be great to be able to link them.
Is that a possibility, George?
Sure.
I got an interesting statistic at the Chamber of Marketing Center, I think, about linking. The more you link your websites, the higher they rank in the state of Google Analytical, the more likely they are to pop up. So, I mean, that's a great linkage, but anytime you can link it, it helps you out. It's exciting.
No problem.
Yeah.
Now, we people who might be interested in the village, who we wouldn't necessarily get on a door-to-door campaign, but then find that this is something that's available to them, you know, if they want to do a startup.
And it's always my first referral whenever anybody comes and says they're interested in helping a business out, you know, if he likes the systems I have in the calls in our new office because they have that technical expertise that people need.
And please feel free to do that, too. We appreciate that.
And just to, I have, I just handed those out for the board. You can let me know how you want to proceed. We put $5,000 in our street skate money for parking lot signage that will more than cover it with extra spend, however the board would like, in that area.
Are they two-sided?
Um...
One-sided, half-sided, or...
This would be, these would be.
No, well, this one would be. You got on Main Street, you're a couple both ways and you'd have an arrow facing the parking lot.
You'd have to put two signs side by side. If you, like, if you looked at it, like, at the front, so you're coming on Lake Street, you can just look over and see it?
Yeah, but you have one sign with writing on both sides of the sign. You don't still...
It's a good idea, Junior, but how would you mount it?
I had envisioned one that you would see, you know, the one with the arrow pointing right would be to the north of the turn and then the one with the arrow pointing left would be as you come from the south.
On each side, different sides?
Different sides, right. So that, but, because otherwise I think you might already be by by the time you see the arrow. If you're coming from the opposite direction, because you'd have to post it kind of a little ahead of the turn.
Yeah, I'll take your right question.
Nice sign.
But the...
About that.
Yeah, well, they've done a beautiful job.
Huh? The letter you draw?
Yeah. This one.
And this one, Junior, wouldn't have to be because that's just going to face outward. That's going to be right at the parking lot itself, so.
I don't know. Well, they got gold trim around it, so. To stay with the, yeah.
And just let me know if you would, how you'd like to proceed on that. And then I do have a couple dates I was hoping to run by the board. In my report, I requested that we hold a work session to talk about all the different projects. We get, make sure you have all the information you need as a budget. And I wondered whether February 11th might work for you. It's an off Monday in between your board meetings. That is something that would work?
What would you want to have it, Melissa?
Whatever works for you. I'm very flexible. If you want to do, if you want to do afternoon, if that's better for people, whatever. Or any other, you know, any other date, but I thought we should try to get a schedule. But if time is going by quickly.
Take a look, look on my signs the second day, then we'll check it.
Check it. And then we had talked about trying to have a public meeting to bring everybody, the steering committee and anyone interested in the public, up to speed on what's happening with the revitalization project. And I was wondering about March 10th. Again, it's the off Monday, maybe evening meeting for that, so everybody who wanted to pretend. So if you want to check those dates out, just let me know.
I wonder if we could get something, we'd rate selected age like those.
Now we're starting to get this back to hometown in California for, so that should help get the word out, some of these other things.
Anybody else? So you go on, give my dear.
Melissa, you have any questions for me?
Anybody else? Mike?
Evening, sir. Bruce and I are here tonight representing the new ambulance purchase committee from the fire department.
Okay.
After...
That's on the agenda.
Right. We just, after a year and a half of hard work, we finally finished the specifications for the ambulance. All the board members were provided a copy before tonight's meeting. We're here to ask if anybody has any questions regarding the specifications. We're here to ask us questions and if not, at some point tonight, we request that you go up to bid for purchasing the new ambulance.
Won't be on the agenda. Oh, no, it was, yeah, it'll be undermined.
Yeah, I'm going to bring it up. We're going to walk the, we're going to make a motion to walk the bid tomorrow. I just started looking them over, so I don't really have, I mean, I don't know.
Listen, you don't have to say anything. Thanks very much for coming. Yes, I want you to say.
I'm going to need you to say one layer of...
Just for a minute. Thanks very much for coming. We certainly appreciate it. You, too.
I didn't hear any news.
Yeah, you want to, George? I'm going to make a motion. I'll make a motion to go up to bid for the brand-new ambulance here in the village or else it's going up with that. Hold on a little motion?
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Moore. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Those opposed, motion carried. Carol, go to work tomorrow.
Thank you.
Yep. Thanks, guys, for the work, too. All right. You all have, sure, copies in the minutes of the regular meeting of January 7th and special meetings of January 11th. If there are any additions or new additions.
In the minutes? Yeah, I have actually a couple of pageos. If you'd like, there really aren't substantive changes, but if you'd like, I could just point them out to Carol.
I'm sure she would appreciate it.
After work. Sorry. First, on the special meeting of the 11th.
Carol had a tough time with that, so take it.
Okay. I think the word ran and the first word of the third sentence should be run.
Probably.
Okay. And then, page two of the regular, meeting of the regular, regular board meeting, rather, January 7th. Wait a minute now. Nope, not page two, excuse me. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, page two, excuse me. Sorry about that. Let's see. It's the third paragraph down that begins with trustee Bird. It's on the fifth line down, one, two, three, four, five, and it begins with, he explained...
Right.
The rest doesn't make sense to me. What the county suggests to us, what to do. Maybe that just needs to be...
Probably.
Okay.
We do sharp cuts. Okay.
Okay. Maybe suggested to us what to do. I don't know. And then I think there was only one. Page six. Paragraph one, last sentence, and asked Public Works Supervisor Pelfic to remind. I think that should be his.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the amended copies of the regular meeting of January 7th and the special meeting of January 11th, 2008. Will that form a motion?
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, vote by the usual side of aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carried. Bills. You all have copies of the bills and do we have any additional regulations?
We have one addition to the New York Power authority in the amount of $75,388.93 this year.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills that's amended tonight.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield. Any discussion? $500,000. Any other discussion? All those in favor, vote. Seconded by the usual side of aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carried. Course comments.
The first letter I have is from the Rouse Point Village Court. The court, according to the Uniform Justice Court Act 2019-A and Town Law 123, is required to present its records at least once a year to be examined by the board or a certified public accountant or public accountant. All records are ready to be audited. John Fountain, Village Justice.
I'll be happy to do it again if everyone agrees.
Thank you very much, young lady.
Is it hard to do?
No, no. There's a form that you go through. It takes, you know, half an hour. If you'd like, it would be good for you to see it.
Yes, a little experience.
I mean, I don't have to do it. I just, I've done it in the past, but...
No, no, that's right. You're doing a great job. I don't take delivery.
Well, no, all I'm doing is, you know, backing up what Tony and John are doing. I mean, everything's fine, but it doesn't seem very long. Got to happen now.
The second letter I have is to the mayor and the trustees. Dear mayor and trustees, please accept this letter as a notice of my resignation from my job as deputy clerk, planning board clerk, and type as effective January 25th, 2008. This has been a very difficult decision for me, but I have decided to pursue other opportunities. Sincerely, Monica F. Murchison.
I'll make a motion to accept her letter. Let's regroup. Second. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Moore. Any discussion?
I would just suggest that we send Monica an official letter of thanks for her service. She was very good about pitching it over the summer in some very trying circumstances and certainly I wish her well with her new opportunity, but I think letting her know that we appreciated her extra effort would be the thing, too.
Thank you. Absolutely right.
The next item on my head...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I have a motion, seconded, young lady.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual side of aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carried. Okay.
The next item on my head was from Melissa requesting use of Hall Street Hall, but I think we took care of that with Michael Brian, or did you still need approval, too?
I just...
Possibly reserved for Wednesdays for Alicia.
Yeah, we'll take care of that with Mike.
Okay, so I think that's already been taken care of. The next item we have is the mayor received an invitation from the State University of New York in Plattsburgh. Cordially invite you to an open house to celebrate the new offices of the North Country Small Business Development Center and the Technical Assistance Center on Friday, February 1st, 2008, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. Over, US over, Plattsburgh.
Very good.
Need a motion? Yes, I need a motion to vote.
I'll make a motion to allow the mayor to go to that.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Those opposed, motion carried.
Do we have a thing after, after 5:30 in Plattsburgh, do that, man? It's only 31st. Oh, this is the 30th?
This is the first.
Oh, I thought it was the 31st. Did you say 31st this morning?
No, I said the first, February 1st.
Hearing needs, not hearing, no. I'll throw a vote.
Ready?
Yep.
Okay. The next item I have is from Jerry Fabro requesting use of the village vehicle on February 14th to attend a Heritage Center meeting in Willsboro at 9:30 a.m. And on March 19th to attend a quadricentennial workshop at St. Michael's College in Colchester, Vermont at 9:30 a.m. And these are both village business related and please let her know if the vehicle will be available. If not, she's requesting that the village board approve the use of the personal vehicle with my own to be used.
I will check the calendar because the 19th of March may be a problem, but I, I don't, am school in March. Okay, so I'll just check it tomorrow, but...
Will we make a motion?
Yeah, please.
I'll make a motion to allow Jerry Fabro to go to the meeting in Willsboro and, if the village guard is not available, oh, oh, here, March.
Yeah, but also the one on the 19th.
On the 19th.
Of March. In Colchester.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to allow her to attend both meetings, March 19th. What was the other date? February 14th. February 14th. I'll put that form of motion tonight.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual side of aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carried.
The next letter I have to the mayor and the board, excuse me, board members of the village of Rouse Point. On behalf of Norchamar and the Rouse Point Champagne Historical Society, I would like to submit this request to reserve the Civic Center from July 28th to August 16th, 2008. During this time, the Civic Center will be used as a venue for the fifth annual summer dance concert, Fete de Danse. Fete de Danse 2008 will take place on Thursday, August 14th at 7:30 p.m. And will continue to function as a benefit event for the Rouse Point Historical Society. We feel that this event will continue to bring vitality and excitement to our village and we look forward to your support. Sincerely, Jason Andrew, Director.
I need a motion to allow that. I'll make a motion to allow the Jason and his group for the Fete de Danse 2008. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield. Any discussion? Is it available? I'm sure it is.
You're going to set your price now or we're going to have another two months' discussion?
Well, when we, when we charged them last year?
Since we don't have a fee schedule for the Civic Center again.
I'm sorry?
We don't have a fee schedule for the Civic Center.
I know. We should have tried taking care of that. Maybe this year. We really should sit down and set that fee schedule up for different functions for users. And we had to have somebody here. Granted, there's, during the day, it's not a problem because we have a person here, but if it's evening or something, of course, the lights don't really help to pay for it.
Is this going to affect all the repair of the roof?
I don't think so.
I don't think so. We're hoping to get that done. Talk about that later.
So, I am fine with that.
Up to the board. Yeah, and I'll amend my motion to, I would like to set the price, same as last year, $300 and less dollars.
You made a motion to that?
Actually, I wanted to make Canadian dollars.
Well, I made a motion, didn't I, Mia?
Yeah, or maybe to allow the use of it.
Or the $300.
And we'll have to get Mike involved here so that he doesn't get, somebody else booked in here. Okay, any other discussion? There being no other discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual side of aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carried. That's it?
Nope, I have one more. I received another letter today from Jerry Fabro to the mayor, Rivers, and the trustees. And Willy Wonka Jr. is coming to Rouse Point. Tom Lavin of Adirondack Regional Theater has approached us to bring this performance to our village. We set the date for July 17th. We are currently, we are currently considering outside the Civic Center, okay, I'm sorry. Outside the Civic Center, moving inside if the weather is bad. I need to know if the 17th is available and if there will be a charge for use of the grounds and/or the building. I also ask the village board included in their budget $850 to bring this show to Rouse Point. There will be no tickets sold. It is free and open to the public. We may have a raffle or two and have a donation bucket. I am also considering approaching some local musicians to give concerts this summer for the enjoyment and pleasure of the residents of Rouse Point and other visitors to our community. I was thinking of starting with one evening in July and one in August. Dates to be determined by availability of performers. I was also thinking of having these performances at the gazebo or in Rouse Park or at the pier. These performers should receive some compensation for their time. I am asking the village board for their support for this project before I proceed and that you consider putting $500 in the village budget for this purpose. If I have your support, then I'll contact some performers to see if there is any interest. I am also open to any and all suggestions for performers, daytime, and place. I am also considering approaching local farmers, backyard gardeners, to have a farmer's market this summer. One day to start, maybe in Rouse Park, maybe a Saturday logistics is to be worked out. I just need to know if I have your support to proceed. I believe that there is a vendor fee charged in the village. I would ask that this fee be waived for this event. It is my intent to have the concerts and the farmer's markets market in the historic downtown. The concerts and farmer's markets are tentative and will depend on the support of the board and musicians and vendors. I am requesting your support as a resident of this community who attends these events in our other communities and believe that we can do the same here in our beautiful village. I believe that these events would be a great asset to our historic downtown. Thanks, Jerry Fabro.
What's Willy Wonka going to do?
He's going to...
We get that part. Play or...
You're going to look for the golden ticket in the campfire, are you?
I don't know.
It's a funny...
Okay.
You're going to actually perform.
You're performing the Willy Wonka story?
I think so.
Okay, I'm interested.
Great song, different. Good start to get the, I'll put that in form of a motion to allow Jerry Fabro to go ahead with the Willy Wonka performance. You better talk to the treasurer.
I think we need to think a little bit about the requested honey that's, you know, just, because honestly, this is the first time that I write, so.
I think I made that decision, I can maybe...
I would say, maybe we can check dates with Jerry and find out a little more about it and talk about it at the next meeting.
Okay, I'll hold off a minute.
Excuse me.
Anything else, Carol?
That's it, that's all I have.
Okay, the board of the mayors and the trustees. It's not on the agenda, but last Tuesday, this past Tuesday, was quite an event in Rouse Point. I hope everybody was pleased with the outcome, but I was remiss. I thanked everybody but the most important person, and she's sitting right there. Melissa, please accept my apologies. I felt so bad afterwards that you, you know, you were the catalyst of this whole thing. You put that, you know, you worked very, very hard at it and I publicly want to thank[1781.41] And I publicly want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. I think the village is a lot better off for it. And I have a resolution for. Well, somewhere here. Resolution. Carol, you wanna read that resolution?
I will.
You typed it.
Whereas pursuant to Article fifteen, section one sixteen of the nineteen seventy nine State of New York election law, the board of trustees of the village of Rosas Point is charged with adopting a resolution appointing the inspectors of election, appointing a chairperson thereof and fixing their compensation. Therefore, the board of trustees of the village of Rosas Point does hereby resolve that the inspectors of election shall be Patricia Dionne, Mary Rascal, Ann Petty, Geraldine Favreau. Alternates would be Margaret O'Grady and Carrie Jeanette. The chairperson shall be Patricia Dionne. The compensation shall be fixed at nine seventy-five per hour for the election chairperson and nine eighteen per hour for the inspectors. This resolution shall take effect immediately. The question foregone was duly put to a roll call vote, which resulted as follows.
Put that in form of a motion.
Second.
Roll call vote, trustee Jefferson. Aye. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. Discussion of two thousand eight legislative forum, I think. We've already discussed that, gave permission last meeting for two people to go. Anybody else interested to get it in now because it'll be, no, women.
No, this is.
I'm sorry, that was the one in Albany. This one's, this one is February first. It's Legislative Breakfast in Glassburg with Senator Benny Little, Janet Dupree, Assemblyman Janet Dupree, and Assemblyman Teresa Seaworth. And I'm requesting permission to go. Does anybody else wanna go? It starts at seven thirty in the morning.
I'll put that in form of a motion allowing the mayor to attend the two thousand eight Legislative Breakfast on February first.
Second. Motion made and seconded, is any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual, sent of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Next item is discussion of D O T safe rooms for school grant. Melissa and I are working on that. We have a meeting with the school on the twenty fourth of this month. The school is backing us on this. We are committed to put a sidewalk in front of the school this year. And we were putting in the budget, but then this came in. We could probably get that, put every sidewalk in the village fixed. Because it's within the radius. And several other things, and we can get up to four hundred thousand. An item for non-construction, about one hundred and fifty thousand. Who knows? So we're going to put in for it.
When's the deadline they're gonna give you the answer?
April first.
That's when they give you the answer, that's when all the papers, you have to.
Not until all the papers, gotta be it. And we're gonna put it in the budget anyway.
Yeah, when I said this year, they're gonna tell you, or next year, or?
This year.
Usually, they don't like to tell you that because you never know when they're gonna make the announcements. But D M T, my understanding is, will turn them around pretty quickly. But I, you know, it's hard to say.
You never know what the state's gonna do, but anyway.
My question is, if we go ahead and do the school one, are they getting reimbursed us, or is it?
That's, we're gonna need to check when the start date is. And George, you and I talked about that.
Yeah.
Every program's different, sometimes they'll let you, you know, sometimes they'll let you go back to when they make the notice that the funds are available, like, all right, it's our water company. Sometimes you have to wait till everything's approved, so I'll have to check into this.
There's a workshop on the thirtieth, and if anybody wants to go in Glassburg, at City Hall, on this grant. So a lot of those questions could be answered right there.
And I have all the applications.
And the last thing I got is. That Monica has resigned, so we have an opening for secretary of the planning board. And Jerry Favreau has stepped up to the plate and is willing to take it. So I am making a motion that we appoint Jerry secretary of the planning board.
Second.
I have a motion made and seconded, any discussion? On salary, how do we gonna pay her? There's about four, it's four hundred and some odd dollars is budgeted, but the salary now is at seven hundred. That we gave Monica. So we have to set the salary.
Would suggest that we leave it the same? The duties won't really change, is that correct?
No, she's gonna have a meeting a month, just about.
Was it seven hundred?
I believe it's seven hundred a year, yep.
After what Mike told me to tell the champagne guests, I was shocked. Nine thousand a year.
For one meeting a month?
Yeah, yeah. He said that, that the clerk up there gets, the planning board and a couple of others, she gets nine thousand, nine thousand a year. She does, above her salary as town clerk.
I think for someone to do the postings and the mailings that need to get done in the minutes of the meetings, I don't see any reason to change it, especially for someone who's not working for the village.
Well, you can put that in form of a, a part of the motion.
I will put that.
Or a separate motion. We haven't approved her yet.
No, that's why, I mean, approve her first.
All right, so we set the salary at, at seven hundred dollars.
That's, that's the current budgeted amount, right? And then if we elect to make a change, we'll be doing the budget another few weeks, so we could make a change at that point.
So who seconded the motion?
I did.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion made and seconded, is any other discussion? There being no other discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. And that's it for me, I believe. Yeah. Trustee Jefferson.
George, boss, you know, boss that, you good with that?
I'm good with you. I just wanted to, thank you, Melissa.
I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Rivers. I'm requesting the board decide on what streets it should be, would like to see funded for the two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine budget.
That's for paving.
For paving, sorry. This came from Arsen. Brian has given me the following list to choose from. He lists the streets, Liberty Street, twenty thousand, five hundred. Washington Avenue Lower, twenty-eight thousand. Woodhaven and Lakeview, eighty thousand. Montgomery Street, Rose Avenue, one hundred and fifteen thousand. Delaware Street, seventy thousand. And the total of paving is three hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred. So, did you wanna talk about it tonight, or do you, do we think we have to make a decision tonight?
I would, would say that we make a decision to go out to bid for this, and then we can pick and choose what streets to do after that. Is that all right with you, Brian?
On Montgomery Street to Rose Avenue, is there any grant money left over to do that first five hundred feet that we talked about?
I think there is, but I'm not certain of that.
Yeah.
But I know that was part of what was in that one package, starting at the corner of Lake and going down to at least as far as the pier. Now, what, what remains, Brian, or what, what the line item would be, I don't know. But it would be something that we can certainly check on.
Check, I gotta put that over here for tomorrow.
But I mean.
I'm, I'm curious about Delaware's, is all of the work gonna be finished on Delaware this year?
All the road crossings are done. I would recommend wait another year to do Delaware.
Because if we're still gonna be working on that street, to me.
Yeah.
It doesn't make much sense to, to do.
Well, we're planning to have the work done by, before June first. I would say this paving will probably be in the fall again.
Uh huh.
So we should be completely off Delaware by, hopefully, you know, June or July. I didn't know if we wanted to leave Delaware in a condition that it's in for another year.
How about if we paved the crossovers? We'll do that anyway. And just go off the paving.
When are you planning on going underground on Rose Avenue? Two years. Two years.
That would affect the road at all when you were, not at all?
No, it's all set to go. We already put a switch up on Rose Avenue, there's a green box there, that we're gonna continue on.
So you want to cut the road at all when you tie everybody in?
See, for Rose Avenue?
Yeah.
Rose Avenue will all be pushed because it's all cement based, we can't cut it.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, that's the old cement, I like.
Road isn't.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's all cement.
So you recommend go out to bid and take out Delaware Street, or should we go out?
Just, just go out to bid for it.
For it all.
And then we'll then can choose the streets after the bids come in, because we'll see how much money we have.
Okay, so I'll put that in form of a motion that we'll go out to bid for the paving of the following streets that I listed. And I'll put that in form of a motion.
Second. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Moore, is any discussion?
Well, actually, I haven't really thought much about this, but this is the complete list of what you think we should examine paving this year?
Well, I don't know if the board has any other areas that, I'm just looking at the worst streets that we've been. We've been wanting to pave Lower Washington and Liberty Street for the last two years, but we have. The paving bids came in really high last year.
Right.
We didn't know the formula to work with on what, how much it costs to put it down.
It's ninety dollars a barrel for oil, or, you know.
Oil profit.
Well. I, I don't know whether, whether Eric.
Yeah. These are the worst streets that I can think of. It's just, Woodhaven and Lakeview is just binder. It's been binder for, ever since they did the development. Just like Beacon Heights, eventually that's gonna have to be top coated.
Right.
I mean, we can't wait until the street starts to deteriorate. We need to put that top coat on to protect it.
Okay.
No other discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual, sent of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
That's all I have tonight, Mayor Rivers.
Thank you, trustee Jefferson. Trustee Penfield.
Mine will be very quick, I need to request an executive session to discuss public works personnel.
Second. Motion by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Moore. Roll call vote, trustee Jefferson, aye. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
And I need to request a second executive session to discuss police personnel.
Second.
How's that performance?
Moved by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Moore. Roll call vote, trustee Jefferson, aye. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
That's it?
Thank you, trustee Penfield. Trustee Moore.
Aye.
No, I don't.
She dropped that, we dropped that one.
Thank you.
Okay. I was approached a while ago, but people that live on Columbus and Ashwood about protecting the electric franchise into the village. George, Brian, myself, never nice at, and the bottom line is no. They don't want to sell the franchise or anything, they want to keep it just the way it is. And that's it.
Little more on that. They are gonna send us, in fact, he asked me from my email address today, they're gonna send us a note. You know, so that we can send it out to the customers again.
And know about it.
And sometimes, but at the same time, they discussed the possibility of bringing in natural gas. And. Well, it's good points about it. And I think the board, you know, in the future, should sit down and take a look at it, because there's places like I know where Pot is, and there's industrial that's using propane for heat, they could use natural gas. Or Delagards over here can use natural gas. And a lot of things he told us, he said he could help us bring down the use of incremental power. But that would be, the homeowners put in gas hot water heaters and not use the electric. And help us reduce that dependence on the incremental power and the higher rate power. He said gas is comparable to your rates right now, electric rates. He said the duty of gas is fast recovery. And so it's something that the board may have to consider. They will not stand the full expense of bringing gas in. He said there are things you can do. The state is giving all kinds of grants out to municipalities to bring in natural gas to get off the dependency of oil. If the board decides, you know, at some time, and they want to do this project, then we'll have to go to our state legislators and put a grant together to bring it in. I think Malone just got a great thing of like, near a million dollars to bring in gas into, to Malone. And the gas electric is willing, what they said was to spend, or spend some money. But they just can't. Economically, it's not feasible for them to do it any other way. And as you understand, they are an invested own company, and they're looking to make a buck. So, keep it, my board, there's a folder in my office that they left, and if I want to look at it, can certainly look at it. Okay? So yeah. Thank you, trustee Moore. Carol?
Aye.
Arsen?
Just reminding everybody during my budget sheets.
Man needs to get the budget done. Okay, Brian?
I called Kurt Wilson again today, and he was supposed to get back to me on the substation transformer.
Yeah.
But he didn't. I took my email before I came here.
You and I are not getting back to him either.
Yeah, we're still looking for the scope of the project and the price to really nail them down. I did put money in the budget for the repair of that transformer, so. It was a ballpark. And until we get, until you have your budget meeting, by the time you have your budget meeting, they should have the scope of the project and a price. What it's gonna cost.
Thank you. Is that it?
That's it.
Open the meeting to public this time, anybody wish to address the board, they do so. All right, we are ready for.
Just, just in hearing, just in listening to what we said, where you're appointing a new council to secretary, whatnot, when someone resigns and they've been paid, is their pay retro? I mean, do they have to pay back what they had been resigning, but they've been paid for the year?
They're not paid for the year, they're paid monthly.
Okay. And the other thing with, like, the waterfront project with the old state dock. Right now, the state dock is currently there, is, you know, is the project to remove it, or is it gonna get put up on the shore for extra parking or space or anything like that?
At this point, no. It's gonna stay the way it is. We don't have the money to do that.
Now, the other, where they're supposed to pay from one end to the other on these contracts from Montgomery Street down. And they're, you know, where it's supposed to, things are budgeted to an extent?
We're gonna check into it, as we said, that there is supposedly some money left to pay part of it. We've got the, the street and the budget, we're going out to get it for the rest of that street.
I think it was the first five hundred feet.
First five hundred feet is a item, forgot what it was.
Part of it was budgeted in one of the grants here, it was for what they call streetscape improvements. And they, you can basically budget the money for sidewalk, curving, green space, paving, however you wanna break that down to improve what they call streetscape in that area. So.
I just, seeing what, yeah. What we have now, you know, what's become of, you know, the original plan of going out down through, and what we have now, I mean, it's far shot from what we had planned. I mean, it's, it's there now, and make the most of it, but what's next, you know, being open?
And, and a couple million dollars, we could have finished the whole thing, but we, we didn't get that much. Only got so much from the state. We used every bit of what we got there.
I understand that the village owns the state dock now, though?
No.
So that sticking out in the water is a.
Well, we checked with the Coast Guard and the Corps of Engineers, and they said it's no problem.
You have to put a beacon out there or something?
Nope. They, both, both Coast Guard and the Corps of Engineers said no. I find it hard to believe.
You have that in writing?
Oh, yeah, that, that was all checked before we did what we did. Hasn't been a wait on the end of that for, I wanna say, almost fifty years.
Just, I was gonna take money and move it, but it's something that has to be moved.
Down the road, maybe. The state comes up with a little more money, maybe we can remove it. Maybe we can add, who knows? That's his part. I think what we got is nice, it's well done. And a lot of people worked hard to get that far with it. Anything else? If not, we'll take a motion for recess.
A motion for recess.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Are we attending executive session?